Let me answer everybody's questions for the pledge of allegiance. Owen and Julian, you don't know this, but we have the state representatives lead us to the pledge of allegiance. So without buying here as a senior member of the
Yeah.
if you can lead us, I do appreciate it.
Alright, perfect. Yeah, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own.
That's great, thank you. Well. First, in harmony along.
Alden?
Yes, excuse me.
Cover? Here. Just?
Yes.
Slav?
Here.
And Pharaoh?
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Keating?
Here.
Okay, I see it tonight on the agenda is a group of meeting minutes from our city council meeting on June twenty-sixth. Is there someone who would like to make a call? If by all day? You're gonna buy a shot, I do. Any comments on meetings?
I don't know.
All day? For the council or the council events? It's good, we've got a vote in the room, yes?
Cover?
Yes.
Alden?
Yeah.
Sammy Pharaoh?
Yep.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Slav?
Yes.
Keita?
Yes. Motion carriers, we have no rear range participation this evening, so we're down to an hour range. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an hour range participation? Hey, how about online? Anybody online that'd like to speak this evening? If so, please use the raise your hand feature. I don't know.
I have no handle.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to the Declaration of Conference of Interest. There.
Although it's difficult to tell with the agenda still being in draft, if this country is, I will set aside for last new business agenda item, although our conflict of ordinance, conflict of interest method ordinance says that this ordinance is not intended to apply to contributions to political campaigns which are governed by state or federal law. I have participated in due friends of no free part, which is local ballot initiatives regulated by state law.
Okay.
But I will be happy to set away from the table.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? On page two of the agenda, which is the book of the agenda. The motion to move the agenda. I mean, we've previously done this, we did it. Move back some of her, thank you. The second.
And back them.
So about all that, do? Thank you.
I do have some questions on K two, the way contract, A four, the minimum donation policy, and K seven split unit system.
Okay, so I think June becomes when I say M six. Therefore, becomes M seven. And K seven becomes M eight. Okay, we've got a vote in the agenda?
What?
Yeah.
Cover?
No.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Alden?
Yeah.
Sammy Pharaoh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carriers. Uh, we have no home appearance this evening. There are two communications in effect, we need the agreements and we'll let our thoughts here. Uh, question? A little bit of the wish comments at the last meeting. The other comments? What?
Um, thank you for your second, now it's not the bottom, so that won't be too bad at this point.
No, that's what you said, you don't have to say that, so the plan during the meeting.
Right.
Uh, right here, so. Thank you for bringing that up. So, um, on the communications, we do have the letter, I think it might even been received or here definitely, um, about the site, I think forty-five broad. I just want to make sure that everybody, including the public, understands that thirty forty-five broad didn't happen to that, there actually was public meetings, there were a couple master plan revisions, um, and the direction it's been taken by the government all the time, it started to know it's all gone along in that direction itself. It's not something that is just being done by whatever the dollar comes along. Um, same thing applies to the pound. That was part of master plan in zone, we see, so. Uh, that was, there was one time where that was reviewed. Nobody at that time said, let's make a bargain, so it was only seen. Um, I think it's important to continue to remind people that just because we haven't talked about it this year, or the last two years, doesn't mean that we're going to help them. There may be been implications that there's no plan that will sit, whereas there's been a plan for over thirty years to help the obeying or stuff for downtown moving out. There's a grand plan that's been going on for a long time, we're all about this, for sure. Thank you. Good time. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on the communication? Okay, we're down to our first, of course, right? I don't see Tim here, so. We're in the board, only getting the point that.
Yeah, because it's not your legs, right, so if they have any, but I can take a shot and I'll ask him later.
Is anybody any questions on the, that way?
Yes, so Friday night, I was walking the puppy dog between ten and eleven P M, and the barricades were still on. So, short question is, when did the barricades come down and what happened for them to not come down at nine and doing no we have a plan for making sure they come down when we're supposed to.
This is all hit to the park?
Yes.
The, the barricades on Central Street.
Yeah, okay. Allow all that courtesy.
Any other questions, sorry, I got them. So, just if we see something like that, can we give a call or what, kind of like Friday night offices have closed on, maybe you?
That, uh, so we do have a D W on, on call.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we have some utilities on a call behind us, uh, which are more close by website. Uh, I mean, you, you can always call me.
Yes.
Uh, but I do need calling the D W on the call number.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Well, thank you, go on. Uh, next up is our work from our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, good evening, council, how is everyone today?
Good.
And open this a little bit and call it to be, yes. So. Sean, you know who good is Boy Paul?
I don't know.
Okay, um, before going to my report, do you have any questions for me?
For the, um, the soft word, I think it said it's a special use, is that correct?
It will be as soon as, um, the tax amendment that we've been working on since before it actually was officially submitted, came in, so he, the applicant, he just held a rehab meeting with him, and he is very remountable to, to doing it for what we think the, the tax amendment will be this.
Okay, thank you.
It will. Um. Um. The following up on Mr. Sammy Pharaoh's comments regarding thirty forty-five Broad Street. Um, yes, it's, it's been a plan, um, for over thirty years to get it understood, how? Um, and a lot of work has gone into the DDA strategic plan regarding thirty forty-five broad, a master plan, and tangentially parks of recreation, um, because at the west corner, where Grand Street meets the park, that's been a vision that has been failed at. Excuse me. Um, uh, one of the things that I actually discussed with Justin earlier today, uh, is coming to you with some specifics um, in my next report regarding the planning efforts that the community's done and providing links to those documents. Um, one, it's a refresher for, uh, for staff, for council, uh, for the other boards and commissions, but it also gives information for those people in the public that really want to know more about everything. Um, and so I will have that in my next report for you. Um, I was fortunate enough to be able to, uh, go to the open house on Friday with Representative Gavino. Um, she was gracious as always. Uh, Georgia was there, I was invited to see Georgia and the rep at the Northville for the July parade, so, um, uh, it's really nice to have that kind of support from our representative. She, um, is happy to come anytime if you wanna have an open house, she'd love to have an open house here, so, um, those are just things that they keep in mind, um. The, the proposed development redevelopment project work, uh, webpages up and running. Um, we will add details to it, um, as it becomes a more mature page. Right now, it's, it's got, uh, the five, five or six projects that are currently in the harbor from thirty forty-five Broad Street to eighty-one Main Street. And speaking of eighty-one, they did, uh, apply for their preliminary E U B plan on Friday. Um, we're getting, uh, uh, everything together with that. Um, we will put more information on the website, including, uh, uh, staff and consultant uh, reviews as those come in, so that the public is aware. That is it for Alan? For my report, unless you've got any other questions for me?
That, uh, on the same walk, I noticed that although we have no trespassing signs on the T poles of thirty forty-five Long Broad, we have none facing the trail. And I think in order to be able to enforce non trespassing, we have around the property at certain distances, so. That's my observation, I guess, not quite.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I went to the second, I really, I put the, I went to the second to look through the different things that, that it's great, it's, you know, one stop shop and everything. And I think probably people will go to it and say, I'm interested in this, and say, oh, I didn't realize this and this was there, I felt that. I think it's, it's a nice addition to the list.
Thank you, uh, Grace and, um, Josh, we're here, they put that together, so, and very glad that there are digitally in time. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Michelle. Are there any, um, comments under the work commission or other force that they're going on through here before I get to the company? Do you have any?
So I have a quick verbal update on bicentennial, I see, like, I have asked the bicentennial team committee to, uh, provide a, uh, monthly calendar look of activities that are gonna be planned, so, um, Cheryl will be who, um, is, um, running that, that, that committee, and Josh are gonna work on that to give us, um, something that can be part of our packet on a monthly basis, so we can have an eye on what is coming up, um, in the vice, for vice and to the activities.
Very.
A lot of good things are in the top, so, very excited.
I just wanna make a couple of comments to know, at the net last meeting, um, there was a couple of, there was some discussion about public safeties and the choosing of the, uh, like, I've managed with, um, the, uh, so you get a thing that I would mention, when we went through, I think it's important to understand, and Sean, you might have mentioned this, that actually they've gassed with, wasn't we surprised that the number of responses we got, more than we expected, that was a plus. He also went through and, and qualitatively went through all the different, uh, people that, the different companies that run that list, and there weren't any that he said across this, so we had to do that all, we couldn't, yeah. Um, it was pretty simple, kind of, you know, to take out some of the higher cost quotes that eliminated a bunch. Uh, and there was another one, we got some feedback from staff on that took off, or some that learned in, uh, their experience, or at least their stated experience, and that basically led to getting the three that we had. Um, the other thing I wanted to make a hundred percent clear is, we had a meeting on Wednesday, and councilmember Alda, councilmember Schlaug, myself were there, we were part of that discussion. Um, the next day, councilmember Alda couldn't be there. Mayor Keel was there, um, so it was, because my Schlaug and Keel myself. The three of us that were there on Thursday did not confirm with councilmember Alda, while we were doing all through those for consideration of them, was no rooting or decisions of four people getting together to decide what that was. We also have been trying very hard to make sure that all the information that the committee receives, council receives. So, I know the city manager posted the, uh, the submissions so that they were available, so we had that information. Um, we did have a recommendation, but as always, council didn't, you know, take, uh, bring in that recommendation, so, I'm really, really not excited is the right word, but I'm really happy with the way things are going, the committee moving along, but there's a lot of good feedback, required apartments, we should get some the share spending, which is the discussion we had about the temporary facilities that is, that information's in the packet, that is a very good discussion, um, and, uh, I couldn't be more happy with the way the community is doing. Thank you. We're down to, we're down to build in your report, we ready?
Sir? Yeah, so, um, my report was a long one, uh, just because of the end documents, um, of which there were three fact. Um, like, the public safety facility documents that were shared at the last meeting. Um, we received our MERS, uh, annual extraterrestrial report, um, which did see us go from ninety-four percent funded down to ninety-one percent funded. Um, a lot of that has to do with, um, you know, how markets doing, and also murders, uh, changing their targets on a regular basis. Um, and then, um, as we discussed, when approving the, uh, contract with the union, uh, by, uh, the contract with the, in the act there. Um, I did also ask, um, Grace to run and grab, um, the supplemental packet that was shared, um, earlier, and it's both online, um, and that really only had to deal with, um, what used to be, uh, in K seven is now, uh, M H, uh, really will be the purpose of the, the mini split systems, uh, for eighty-one Forty Main Street, since their uh, AC condenser unit, uh, has failed, and we wanna, we wanna get them up and running with, uh, air conditioning in this, in this heat, but also, uh, make sure we have a unit that, um, we can reuse in, in our future facilities. Um. Does, uh, does anybody have any questions on, on our report?
The question, Justin, I have one on the, uh, there's, we're, we're um, the version report is very good, right?
I'm sorry, I don't see the version report?
Yes.
Oh, that's where?
Yeah.
Um. So. Ninety-one percent? Down, down to ninety-four, still very solid, right? Um.
Remind me if we uh, put it into the budget. If you're, if we're decided, or, so definitely, you still have a camera, we decided.
We are slightly excited to talk about, um, doing that, but we are higher than the, um, recommended. Okay. By like, I want to be twenty thousand, forty-five thousand?
Okay, I would say we're in a hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay, okay, we'll just, okay, yeah, that's there, that's up there.
Yeah, so, 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 the, the, their, their predictions for the next several years are going to continually be increasing.
Right.
Um, and so, that, that, that will have an impact in the budget.
And then I just.
The, 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 the one thing that, that they should be can do is tell, in their recommended numbers are, um, the additional contributions that we've been making, these are those going to be separate line item that they don't factor in when, when, uh, making the recommendations on annual contributions.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question to Justin on his report? Hey, are there any council members, please? Council received an email. Um, Amy Joe coming in, they a couple weeks ago. And do a little bit in how to get a learn about fire pitch design process and project, and, but we wasn't, um, familiar with the website very well, like, we have a little bit of access. And I find that, so we, we met here and, uh, talked a lot about the, you know, the history of how we talked about fire protection and the different salts and different kinds of And I wanted to share, I did some research, I found this, who knows, a couple of us, for me, you know, like this is that platform. I think she had her husband involved, learned a lot, people didn't know. Probably why it's good. And then stepped through it when they had an obligation. We learned, you know, my friend with. Like the, referring my wife as the first lady. Fun something like that, then we'll get together and I was told that another day would call him there, the lady mayor, the lady mayor S. But I'm going to change to an accurate one that I use, but I referred my wife here, lady mayor S. Okay, instead of the first lady, they told me that to a whole of the president. So I ended up buying a house over the last several years. I thought that was too risky, I wanted to share, it's something I learned a lot publicly. We, did we get the meeting finalized with Edo for the 20th or the 21st? Or related to the cell of testing?
Really?
I want to talk about that a little bit here, I know you're trying, you're trying, so I appreciate that.
Yes, that's fair, without crying. I don't think we're going to be able to throw a whole team, either in person or virtually on the 20th, or working behind.
Okay, well, just so the. Good reference on standing and counsel was standing. We, we've had a request from the state of Michigan, from the Department of Fire Relations, to do some flare up. They have done the test for gases in the cell and potentially. A couple of bad stuff and so I did our book for everything. And we got with them back in March. And then council actually approved a permit for them to do some testing over there again within. Do the, you know, on board. But I learned that that did not happen. You know, they did not go forward with that, they constantly got going, got going, had some concerns, none of that happened. We did receive an email from the county, again, her name, that's maybe. Court's officer somewhere, sent us a, both of us, sent us a note. You know, just acquiring who we're looking to deal with, we're trying to, we're trying to. Do that thing and get them out there. But there, we are going to have another meeting, it's not a thank you screen, we're getting one in front of others. On the actual date that I have, no matter what, or not, I'll certainly report back when we have it. Why council would know that there's a good likelihood that's coming back to us for some additional, either action or. We're not going to all give their, but something to look forward to and keep it there. That's all I have, any questions for me? Like the, John from Holland and Julian, can I give you two a chance to introduce yourself?
Sure, fine.
Oh, the council, those we are?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really, I think probably a lot of you know my mom, she's the best president of the school board. My sister's on the planning commission, I'm excited to be on here. I'm, I'm rising senior at Dexter.
Who am I?
Sure, and I'm a blessing, it's trying to seem to say. Um, yeah, I'm Julian, I was the planning commission last year, so I know Michelle, who we were in the other back in the day. And also you love movies, everyone's small, there was everything. I was in Charlotte too, so I actually disagree, right? But, yeah, so.
Well, at any time on the agenda, you know, you have the right to raise your hand. Just maybe, obviously, now, you know, voting on those, but we do expect it in with a launch, we can scale if we have a thought. Free, free area, so.
Yeah, thank you.
If we get into the old business areas. We participate in that during the pandemic, if you want to follow, that's okay to do.
Thank you.
For the work of the next year.
You as well.
Okay, so I think it's me to base three of the agenda to consent agenda, which just has four items, okay, one, three, five, and six. You're someone that can move to go far.
I will allow that we approved four items on consent agenda. Bills of peril in the amount of $660, that would be $20, $15 per dollar in the United States. Tertiary people, not for a month, not for a seat wing or. Eight, one, oh, acceptance of bench formation, Jeff, whoever, and is going to be carrying on August 14th. We agree to conserve franchise agreement of direct activity.
Thank you, I'll do a second. Thank you. We make action on these as well, vote, we're going to, we're going to, it's part of vote to approve the consent.
From Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
All that, yeah, hover, yes, slash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries, we're down to unfinished business. Uh, prior meetings, L1 is consideration of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, E. schedule. Regular, scheduled. If there is someone who wants to make a motion to approve this, this table. I'll move the E. schedule, move myself there, thank you, is there a second?
Thank you.
Yeah, all that, thank you. Any questions on what's there? There.
Do we need a motion or another whereas for doing the refund with folks who may have been overcharged?
I, I think since it's under 5,000, I have a little review that.
Good question, appreciate that. What, anything else, what?
No, we'll be, yeah, we, we did a pretty thorough review of all permits and periods of the E. schedule resolutions. Going back to 2018. And we did find discrepancies. And so we're, we're going to make those right.
And you got that between the EDG resolution and the adopted versus the forms that are handed out or acting, thank you for that. And those are available online as well as paper or just there? That's what we, got them all, all of the tests. All of this, happy folks, that's something better. Okay, see, no, everything goes up, nothing wrong.
I'm there.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
All that, yeah, hover, yes, slash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, unfinished business item called two, consideration of the Chuckland and Barbecue LLC lease ordinance. With somebody that's got. They're wanting to prove. No, they're making permission, motion to approve the lease. Move that down the barrel. Thank you guys, love, thank you. Okay, are there questions on what the drug, that?
That clarification of the motion, is it to approve the lease and adopt ordinance? Or are we doing one by one?
Both of them. So, so it, it should be adopt of the ordinance and then as part of the adoption of the ordinance, the, for instance.
Okay, so that's the. Clarification of the difference, the ordinance, that begins the lease, pardon me if I use the revolution instead of.
Don't add to that.
I have nothing to add, other than what's in my report. Scott tells what you're over, excited to clean up, addresses, how the ordinance or how the ordinance should be won in, or re-sorted.
Okay. So again, the, the motion is at the bottom of page, you know, it's going to be one. You put that back in the ordinance, right? Right, you were directly, yeah. Okay, really, it would be important. Okay, there's no vote, you approve or not?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm there.
Yes.
All that, yes, hover, yes, slash?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. We work on that, we work through that. We're down to new business, second of our agenda. Eight items, just put three to move up and set an agenda, so we'll get these, M1 is discussion of wave parking bucket on city property.
So, uh, there, there has been a little bit of turnover at Wave, but prior to the former executive director leaving. She had brought up that they were going to be receiving some buses and that they're going to be looking for a place to park them. I think right now they're, they're being parked over in Chelsea. And right now, we, we currently assist them by allowing them to access the waste water treatment plant. To fill up their, their buses that are, yeah, the pump that we have on site. And it was commented that, yeah, we have the lot adjacent to the waste water treatment plant that is currently not being used for anything other than kind of overflow parking. Which we use primarily during the waste water treatment plant project and not so much since then. So they, it was quoted that, you know, maybe, maybe we could. Access that property, use that property for these buses that they want to, if they want to park. I, I would briefly did a little bit of searching in the ordinance to see kind of what would be required of Wave to do that. And I want to bring this before helpful, see if, if there was a person going that route or if there was a unanimous, no, thank you, and. We, uh, probably, well, even other ways.
So what's the, what's the vision here, the stolen area that's shaded in purple right on the drive? Right, they would what, they're gating this?
No, I don't think they have any.
So they, it's a, rather be a gravel surface then?
Yeah, so they, I, I believe they, they do want to install fencing.
Yes, and possibly electric charging stations, which they would have to pull. Others, when, when I experience for those at the time, they're going to say they want to do that.
Okay. Yeah, is this a yearly contract, two year or?
So, yeah, so, so, so my thought is, we've done a pretty few, uh, memory of understanding before you. That should be desired, you know, them to be gone or we need to use the property then. There's still, you know, a clause that, that's, we have a full right to, to reach out.
Was there could be an opportunity, maybe many years ago, we wanted to utilize that, but.
And, and, you know, in our conversation, I can say, they understand that, I mean, that's, that's our property and, you know, we, we may have a future use for it, so.
So does that mean that the drivers will leave their cars there? When they go use the buses?
I don't know if they worked out the details of exactly what you mean to do that as a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, any question that you have. I'm speaking, we, we.
There, I have a nerdy zone in the question. So I get that it would be accessory use and that it wouldn't be the principal use of the property. But accessory uses are usually accessory to the principal use, which is wastewater from the plant. It doesn't seem to me that. Another entity using it is accessory to our use, if it was our bus to send. I can make that leave, and so. I don't know the answer to that, it just caught my eyes as I was reading through it very.
Uh, I think we've looked at it more of the perspective of that it's currently an accessory parking lot to the waste water treatment plant and it means that accessory parking. Wouldn't change and if the, then for some reason there really need for wastewater to use that parking area. There are some kind of contracts, we're probably not ready to use that, it's still need. Something that would be used by wastewater treatment plant, as we did.
I think, I do know that currently that we do have Fisher memories that are working off, with block down to the river and do a little bit of. That's pretty, same, you know.
Well, they're, they're, they're probably concerned that that can get reversed all above levels.
That was my next point, and obviously, this is something that we would kind of, why, and all that.
Yeah, I, I think that would always be a part of the agreement that would have the, after.
Well. So the fact I assume in addition to catalytic converter. Issue would also be to stop people from using, you know, what their charging stations, they're pretty there, right? So my question related to though, though, is. How, I mean, they're obviously not paying for that energy, right?
I, 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 there are ways to, to meter that.
Okay.
And so, right now, we have a system set up where, you know, they pay us, reimburse us for the gas that they use, or imagine that it would be. A similar product where, you know, we would have to pay appropriately like this, and then they would reimburse us.
Yeah.
So just to, uh, to give you that, I mean, that's a point. The, we look at it. Very broadly, um, as far as, as great as I think it's actually. And all this comes, if council is uncomfortable, but that doesn't really seem to fit. We can always come back with another to the order to make this very clear. That it's not just parking for, wait. But creating this, there's appropriate use, in, in order for everyone to be comfortable. I already know on that, but what, what is the time limit, I'm not expecting.
And yeah, I, I think it would probably be sooner rather than later for them, but they, they do understand that there's a process that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel through.
I would be interested to see if they could drop a meter so they could pay their own water bill, so they're going, going over, going again. They'd be there, they're going to have to suffer, they're, they're considering. Probably plenty of, I think, yeah, I mean, given that goes to the plan.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think, I, so I guess this is special to make, to find out if work.
If there's a.
Interest of work, against the idea of, well, I do, I'm not hearing anybody at all regarding against the idea, so I would not, I'm sure if you continue to do the discussions and then. Bring back what I was going to ask, go with. Dennis Ross review.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, we want to, we've been deciding term two, discussion of the W R R M A, R F P. Can you, Justin, tell me what all of those, that can, to the, they might be looking at them?
Uh, one, Western, uh, Walk On Recycling Resource Management Authority.
Okay. Their question is always, yes.
Uh, so Josh is our Walk On representative, so I'll let him give the background and lead into the, the.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure if Bob and Tom, who's the attorneys for, for Walk On, always things like all this, so he clearly has my question, but. Basically, what, what Walk On does need to do, what their, their grand goal is to create an authority, which all the Walk On municipalities. Are underneath, kind of underneath the umbrella of Walk On, all these services for this resident trash recycling. And yard waste will be underneath Walk On, so the gist will be is that as part of that RFP process. We would give them information that would be to, you know, have that specifically, so they'll take, you know, information such as our residential units. Specialized dumpster and stuff and things like that, incorporate that into the RFP. One of me including tonight is a more broader version, so it doesn't have a lot of specifications in it. And having the name that we're having, you know, is, is kind of council's direction on whether council's kind of looking to potentially, you know, be a part of this RFP. Or if you have a lot of stay out, kind of on our own. And for the RFP, I think one of the things that was just included in here, and I, I already included in here, is that being a part of the RFP doesn't necessarily mean that we are. Not to sign on to be in the contract, but basically allows us to incorporate our, into it, to kind of give that pricing, looks like. So I think we, I think we brought it in front of you in January with Bob, and so most of the information has stayed relatively the same, but, but like, uh. But, uh, but yeah, so mainly just to be like I said, it's going to be maybe the residential, yeah, private cycling and yardways. And maybe some shared dumpster on that as well, so. The nature of that, or.
So what, what amount of work is involved, the staff, the workers, they, let's get the, the.
So the, a lot of the things about the RFP is that a lot of the work, especially like on the, on the back end of things, the key calls could be more or less shifted towards the Walk On. So as I was saying, with Walk On, Walk On will be the, the contract holder, so you have a, you know, waste power acts with contract with Walk On. And rather being, you know, their billing being done with the individual municipalities, you build Walk On as the authority. So Walk On would have a staff, have staff or staff members who would, you know, be experts on the contract, building big phone calls for residents. So typically, right now, how it kind of is set up is that if we call the office. We take, you know, those calls, we either hand them up, like there's something that's very difficult to handle, or something that we translate. So, real, so realistically, the idea is that we move work from city staff and transfer it to Walk On.
Yeah, and I, I didn't state my question at all, I actually like the, you've been calling the city office, so if they're not going to anything, because I know you guys have been dealing with, I don't like. What I meant is, if we were to say, okay. You will be part of this RFP. What amount of work is it for you guys and your team?
Yeah, I, I.
The, the same that, yeah, why, we aren't receiving this price.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, I think it'd probably be relatively minimal, and be, uh, reviewing the RFP to make sure it's, it's. In line with how we, we do things and we expect the service to run. And providing that feedback back to Walk On. Uh, we, we've done that a little bit, but I think you, like, if, if a couple of interest in having us participate in the RFP, we think a little bit more seriously and. Do a, a more thorough, deep dive. And then providing kind of basic information, like the number of residential units. Uh, the issues, does the unit, yeah.
Maybe an apple branch or something, okay. Well, I guess I'm going with the request, it's kind of eyes wide open, I don't find you doing the information, and it's not a lot of work. As far as you can get done that, I don't see anything else participating in the. RFP, and that doesn't mean a lot of switching ways manager, I'm just saying, it wouldn't be anything hurt to have those agents, I suppose.
Thank you, yeah, um, I, I agree that we, you know, we can participate, and it's not a work for you all to, to get. Pricing, get more information. One of the things I asked in January was the, the company that they go with. And GFL seems to be the company that they contract with. And there are many, many communities that have a lot of issues with that. So, the, there is a part for me that. I, I like the idea of having more information, it never hurts to have more information. But I, I would be very careful in our approach as it will take a lot of decision making in the end out of our hands. That currently we are more directly involved than, uh, are part of something like this is out of our hands.
So as I read through this, it only references curbside park collection for residential trash. It doesn't reference commercial or industrial, which would be a gap from what we currently have. I also read it as places like 150 Jeffords that has the dumpster, they're not curbside, they're not carts. So I think between us and the other communities that may have just do residential. There's a bit of a gap that needs to be closed unless we want to change the system that we do. Uh, there's a couple of spots in there, my recollection from January is that our preference was that people be able to contact the city instead of a different level of government. That was my recollection.
Great.
I will just do a couple of little tidly bits here. Cause I read through the thing and made notes, I might as well. It seems like on the bulky waste and white goods, that that ought to be separated, there's two concepts that have kind of been smooshed together and it makes it a little sloppy. Again, the residential. I, I, I guess I had a question, or at least for a future question, the residential unit count change. It seems to be that it's locked in January 15th, does that mean if someone who comes in after that, they're not going to get service or we just don't pay for that extra? And it doesn't, again, reference commercial or dumpster or still stated things. And again, my apologies, I did have notes here, on page 19, they need to strike Van Buren Charter Township. Unless we can get them to pay for it, that'd be awesome, then move that in there, but we should probably ensure.
So the cover, that's kind of much, I think, it doesn't cover, kind of, that's a table paper, you got to include that one, which is in that.
Yeah, I mean, we would provide that, yeah, the, the, so we, oh, this, this is our personal services. And you don't have to, and you're not currently covering it.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that I often see with. This type of document, I'll create, like, what that, whether for you, just the single thing is that vehicles going through have to have a licenser or medallion or something on there. I don't remember seeing that in here, and that's just so you can do a real quick basic check that this machine has been checked and it's safe and insured and all that stuff, it's not going to leak oil, whatever. Back under the model contracts. Is it page? One, two, 17 and 270. Um, this proposes recyclables only every other week. I don't think that's acceptable for us, I think that's something that we ought to be able to keep every week. I know we will need multiple bins in our house in some weeks if it changes every other week. Again, it doesn't reference some sort of there. Did have a question, Christmas trees, this would do collection to the Waste Management Service instead of EPW. If that's something that EPW folks are happy with, that's great, otherwise, I know oftentimes in winter, there's a lack of things to keep busy. And so that could be a good way for them to manage our workflow and not do things. See, the, one thing that was referenced in here that I don't recall seeing was the. The model of community contract, which I believe that it tended to be a contract between the communities and Walk On. And I think that's an important part of this, because as it's written here, Walk On, that's the schedule. So Walk On can move the date on collections Monday, Thursday, Friday. Without knowing what that contract looks like, I don't know what protections we have, say. Don't move it around, we'll keep it on the state. Well, that would be on more pieces of policy. I'm done.
Thank you for your comments, but, yeah, I, I lost the current, so on, that was just for the, what we have now, I don't want to be dead, but. Yeah, um, one of the things that, uh. That came in the form of different tenants, I liked about listening, and maybe once, we could have a meeting with them before a project. And would allow them to come in at 6:00 AM an hour before. Um, I don't know if that's, sometimes there's something that we're able to buy for us, but it does sound a lot, especially with actual road projects. We'll bring that for. Okay, we want to, item 23. Uh, we're not even considering that on here. Um, we're talking about, so this is, we got, we got the last meeting. The budget we approved at the last meeting, that projection of approximately $57,000. And lots of plus, right, and, and like the fact that the senior center provides a lot of services for our senior, our area, they've got a broad increase in. People, people, just staying there. And projecting, it could be an additional 60,000 for the city general fund reserve. In addition to, if I put into the budget, that's clear. It's good, their current operations. If there's somebody that would be willing to make that motion. So, that will make a motion to contribute in addition $60,000 in city general fund reserve in the senior center to support their fiscal year or fiscal operation activities in store. And I. Kind of that, all that, that's all. I am. You know, I, I don't know that our budget is. It's pretty solid, but I don't know if it's, we'll say, we can jump to. It's pretty solid, but I don't know if it's reasonable enough to say we can jump to a hundred thousand every year, every year. So I'm comfortable with the way we did it, moving to forty five, and I think we benefited from some access, right? You know, that's fair. But that necessarily always going to be the case. And we have other. Services that we provide like fire, at least there are fifteen to go off. So I think that can take this on a year to year, but it's quite a positive outcome. Well, I reserve. Just upon waiting for this. That's clear. And other other. Other than obviously, you know, the one that, um, deserves funding for future stuff, but maybe. You know, bigger apartment buildings, I think, and it's open to all. Like, there's three lines higher, but, um, I think this is one to, uh. To do for, which will drive a lot of the community and. Um, appreciate the motion and that. On this. You know, it's, I mean, um. Thank. And that's a good time to take it and go with their holidays and. Yeah, that's what we talked about. The. He made the. Government of math that it had with forty five plus sixty was what, hundred and five, right?
Yeah.
And we divide that by. Forty nine, which is the middle, it's about one four tenths of the original. So maybe we can, by doing this. Where we're different paths and you can promote to the other communities that four tenths of the middle is the new standard. Not not just so much for fun and people, so. Yeah, but it's a good thought to do later. But then I have a concept, I didn't mention, I think it's important to do this.
No, I just wanted to say that, um, it has been amazing to watch in the short time that, uh, Gordon has been. Here as the director of our senior center that, um, how much growth and interest has come, um, to to our. Communities, to our senior center. Um, it's, um. Great, well done. Also, um, thank you. Um, and, uh, that it is, um. You know, the culture of our senior center is our community. Um, we always talk about our community that, uh, now brings even more people. To want to be a part part of this. Um, and, um, I'm glad that, um, we have. Um, ability that this for this year, um, hopefully to do some more.
Thank you. Would you want to say anything? No, not at all. Thank you. We will do the, uh.
All that? Yeah. Sunny here?
Yes.
Shells?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Other? Yes, yeah.
Yes. Motion carries? Thank you.
Oh, this is Eric, I can give a hundred and back seconds.
Yeah.
I don't think that was funny. I just wanted to, uh, thank you all on behalf of myself and board of directors at the Dexter Senior Center. Thank you so much for your investment. You will see a return on it. You will see our senior center continue to grow, uh, over this next year at MBR. And we couldn't do what we do without the support of everybody here. So thank you very much for considering and listening to my very wrong-witted speeches, but it was worth it. So, thank you all again. I'll bless that.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, this is, I'm for, is the discussion of twenty twenty four, that's two thousand twenty four. Baker Road project to help on the opening.
Sure. So, um, we're, uh, funding, um, for, uh, the YouTube thing of Baker Road twenty twenty four. Um, we, uh, put this in front of you for, uh, O H M. Uh, designed a little while ago, uh, which have been working. And they're about seventy percent, uh, plans now. Um, and so. During between their designing efforts and, um, site walk. Um, there there were some things that were noted, uh, that we thought should probably be addressed during the project. Um, the good news is that, uh, through the federal funding, uh, program. Um, those items that are participating items are eighty twenty funded. Um, and there's a certain range, so we can go over what was initially, um, provided as the proposed budget. Um, but I'll turn it to safety, uh, to kind of walk it through, uh, to mix up that that was.
Good evening. Well. I'm Stacy Monte. I work with Marcus. I don't know if I've spoken in front of you guys before, um, but he was unable to be here tonight. Um. Thanks for the intro. That was helpful. So there's seven items that kind of came about through walkthroughs and discussions that. We've included on the plans and then also in the schematics for an easier reference for you guys. The first one is, um, adjusting the curb radius at, uh, the corner of Baker and Main on. South side, east side, probably look at it. Um, if you go look at it, currently the semis are clipping the curve, um, so we'd like to kind of push that out. Avoid some of that running and, um, issues that they're having in a little more space to make that turn. Also, when pushing that out, we'll have to relocate a hydrant slightly, just to kind of push it out of. Up that range a little bit more, make sure they don't hit that also. The next one is at the post office, there's an existing ADA space, but it is not compliant. Um, in order to make it compliant, it would take a little bit of extra grading and coordination of the post office. Um, so we're suggesting moving it to the north on the. On that section near the post office, there's currently free spaces. One of those three is the barrier free space. That's on the south side of those three. We want to move it to the north side of those three. And insert a dead space in between the first and the second space, um, to provide some access. For those pedestrians to get on the sidewalk there, we'll make it an ADA compliant ramp as well. Um, that area just gives up a little bit more space to work with and it's a little bit easier to grade. The DDA was interested in adding a. Um, area repurposing space closer to downtown. So we found some space that one would fit. It's going to be pretty much on the northwest corner of Baker and Main. Um. We'll add that in and make sure that there's accessibility from the space to the nearby sidewalk. The next one, um, at a recent PC meeting, they suggested adding a crosswalk on Baker at Forest Street. Um, it ultimately causes the loss of the two parking spaces, but it would provide extra accessibility across Baker. And connectivity to the sidewalks. The next item is the Grand Alley, Grand Street Alley, um, sidewalk area. Um, it's currently very out of compliance. Um, there's extensive grading that needs to be done in order to make it compliant. So we're suggesting regrading that and taking out some extra sidewalk in order to make that work, make it fit in as needed. The next one, Storm Sewer Edition, there's a spot near the south end of the limits. Uh, that the storm water currently drains to the low point, but there is not a catch basin in there, so it just sits. Um, and kind of deteriorates the road and curb nearby. There is nearby Storm Sewer that we propose to connect to and put catch basin in to gather that water to prevent. Further deterioration, especially by putting in a new resurface where. And the last one, although significant in cost, uh, would probably be very beneficial. There's a significant amount of uneven sidewalk, sidewalk that holds water. For hazards, uh, failing driveway approaches along the project limits. Um, we would propose to replace all the driveway approaches and then to stop repair the sidewalk to make it flat and new again. Um, that was kind of a quick run through, but with that, I'm happy to hear any feedback or questions that you have on any of the items that are mentioned.
So, and from the post office, the other ramp would come out then?
We would, it's currently a ramp, but it's, um. Not defined like it should be, so we're going to prevent and leave it as sidewalk. Cause there's, there's.
If you have a step off then.
Yep, there's, I think, three there though, like kind of one for each little parking spots.
Yeah.
So we would curb the one that's technically clarified as room and then make the other one.
Yeah, okay.
And depending on how we find last night comes out. Um, I know that I know one option might be to address, to continue to address the, um. Uh, dry eye and driveways, um, also a lot of them are looking pretty, pretty bad. But, um, deal with the additional sidewalk work. Um, separately in in another project.
Yeah. Well, good to, um, do we contact the other utilities, um, like the gas company, we know a project we're going to start. If you see if they've got anything in regard.
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I don't think that.
Or do you have something?
Yeah, like when we redo a road and the gas company comes in a year later and decides to. Do we put in the gas line, these gas main will.
I'm glad you brought that up because, um, um, the P P. Our governor, Richard, has been doing something big on the improvements to the gas on the vehicles too. Um, I know there's been a lot of infection in our road and our street in the end of town. I have that heard that there's any respect. They could probably, that's definitely a question. Well, the next one.
And then my second question is, I know that the wastewater treatment does, um, manhole surveys on sewers. The sewers there on Baker Road are real deep. Um, hopefully we can incorporate that into whatever we're doing if we need to regen the manhole. For their.
I believe we were looking at. Um, just the catch basins and not any of the moving force. Uh, just to make sure that the bricks are still in good shape and repair as needed.
Your job, guys, is not participate in work, but if you do, because we'll go left or we'll get that, yeah, kind of looking out for something that can happen later. That, that's the way.
Um, I'll start from the north with the Baker curve. Is the reason why a hardened curb, so paved, stamped, whatever on top of the curb wouldn't work in that location?
I'm not sure I'm following the question.
So you leave the curb in place and then you do a little sidewalk on the side, basically.
Instead of.
Yeah.
I don't know if we considered that. I. I think just the number of. Times it's been hit in number where we just figured rooting it out would be a good option, but I don't believe that that's.
Okay, um.
And and sorry, kind of on that point, um. This part of the Dexter Chelsea Roundabout, um. To that project, we're we're working with them on, um, signalization and then updating all our signals and taking it over to the county system. Um, one thing that we want to talk to them about is, would we be permitted to relocate? The signal posts at, um, Baker and the car, um, because that that post regularly gets hit. So that's, that's, uh, another item that we're, we're hoping would rest in that area. When, and then it gets, it gets hit by semis and bases taken out, uh, which is a problem.
Our recollection is actually going to be very difficult fix because there are tons of utilities in there.
So, so, um, one question that I have, that I have for O H M and potentially for, is. You know, right now, there's a pole on one side and a pole on the other. When we take the. Um, signalization attachment and move around to the other pole. Um. But I I don't know what that requires.
Have we done?
Maybe you can.
It's all up to that. I'd like to add to Zach's, but I don't want to, I could do that if he's done.
No, that's okay.
Um, Patrick, I thought came up with a plan and wants to do that. We have sewer on both sides of the road, so Zach is correct. There is a utility conflict on either side. But I thought that O H M had came up with a plan maybe five, six, seven years ago. I didn't remember what it was on how we could move that. So, on that particular. Thank you, Zach.
Yeah, and 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 the the department for the product, because I mean, yeah.
I'd like to know that Mr. Schloss and Zach is correct. Have we done the core samples yet?
Oh, I believe we did, um, as part of a different project. Um, we were doing the report for the. Streets and we have options for that. I don't recall the.
So at least whatever we have wasn't really gross that you're like, oh, my gosh, we have to redo this. Okay.
I think it's very healthy, but I don't recall it.
Now, the, one of the challenges with this area is that it's heavily trafficked and vehicles are slowing down, and so that's caused a lot of running. This profile seems to be the same as currently there, which. Makes me suspect we're going to get more writing in a quicker time. Has there been consideration to other materials or different mixes? So that the road will last longer.
I don't know about mixes, but I know in some of the areas with ready, specifically near Baker and Maine. We were considering doing a full depth replacement to address the sort of the sub surface.
Okay, but no concrete.
I I don't believe so.
Okay. Um. I am a little sad and and Marcus can confirm that I say this every time, but I am a little sad that the radiuses on most of these streets aren't being reduced. Forest and Grants to the east are truck routes. Trucks aren't supposed to be going there. We do have a center turn, so if they do need to get there for moving or whatever, that they can cut through. Um, it does encourage cars to go really fast. If you walk there, cars are cutting, they they fly by. Um, is the crosswalk on Forest proposed to be the concrete like we've got downtown, or just going to be a straight man?
I think it's just.
Okay, I would throw up there the consideration that it would be a good place to start doing stamping is when you change the material and feeling your car, people start to drive slower. Um. Why? Does it have to be added at a chicane? Why isn't the sidewalk, the new crossing following existing sidewalk lines? Is it for slope or?
Um, are you asking why it's kind of a diagonal? Is that what they, is that what they're doing?
I am looking at page two fifty two, or no, sorry, that's the wrong one. But I'm looking at it, but it's actually on page two fifty three.
Okay, I see that. Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
So I ask that because we have a number of new sidewalks in town that use, I call it a road chicane. And I get the engineering that people are looking more directly at the traffic and there's a shorter distance people have to walk. But also for folks who might be mobility impaired or have a kid in a wagon, a kid in a stroller. It makes it, or the five-year-old on a bicycle, it makes it extremely difficult to navigate. If you want to see the effect go on Baker, that little. Island we've got, um, that has the ninety and ninety, it's really gross when people are pushing strollers to there. So is that because of slope or is it to make it a shorter crossing distance?
So, so I think the issue there is the, the, um, straighter an angle you place that crossing, the more, uh, perpendicular to you.
Yeah.
No, I I meant falling at a steeper angle, following the existing sidewalk.
Oh, oh.
He must have followed the right line.
So that when you're walking down the sidewalk, you see the path and you don't have to zigzag twice.
The 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 goal was to was to get it, uh, closer to, uh, perpendicular to Baker Road to to reduce the the crossing distance.
Yeah, it philosophically, I I disagree with it. It's not a high-speed traffic. You can clearly see where cars are coming from and. Um.
But it, I mean, it is also, you know, three lanes with an additional parking lane, so it is. It it, when you're on site, it does feel like a longer distance.
You're not crossing the parking minutes on that, hopefully. With this, it's thirty six feet of asphalt, the diagonal. Uh, the other question that I'll raise again, and Marcus can testify that I do this again. Twelve-foot lanes are huge for a local street. That's the same width of lanes on I ninety four. So. In urban design, one way to control, manage this traffic speeds is the vertical lanes. These lanes are designed so you're comfortable going seventy miles an hour. And the only way to fix that isn't putting up a stupid little sign on a lollipop. People are just going to try and get a flash extra angry. It's we want to design the space so that people feel comfortable going the speed that they're about to be going, which includes narrower lanes. Um, and I think there is space that we make those closer to a ten-foot lane with a nine-foot center turn, um, that we could have. Strength bicycle on your side. Broke my conscience.
Right, I have one question, um. And I don't want to. Do we lap away away at the corner there of the annual Baker? That's. Maybe I have to do a bit more of anything. Anyway, it goes to me, and I'm not dating two thirty. Four. This is the removal plan or. Looks like the. Um, right about the part where the yellow houses. And kind of do a foot down a little tree. But when I was, I was going to go up the comment, because we'd nice if the sidewalk.
But when I was gonna go off the comment, it would be nice if the sidewalk went along with the radius. It would be great if the sidewalk would be. Coming to that corner. Further away from the road, but if we don't have the property managed better, it's. Then we did. Looks like the regular landwalk. Okay, remind me on the timing of this since we they just there about seventy percent plan. Uh, and we're supposed to be done if I design and I have that. So. October?
I hear Amy for our fall G I.
Okay.
And then.
Winter bin.
Yeah, I think like January running.
Great, okay, that's good, great. Thank you for your work on this. Thanks for the questions.
So, um, based on evidence, Mr. Michelle. What is the? If you want to do something like my friends, is there anything that has to happen in the design or is that just?
But if you've been striving, I do hear that there's enough with with the three lanes.
Well, can we investigate that unless you.
Yep.
Yeah, really, um. I'm not going to bike around. I don't know, we have to have them in those places, but. We usually have a plan for all happens when you invite kids to main street. But and though we broke the other way, I expect there was beyond the project. There was a project when it goes.
Right, sure.
So if you get this look at the. The role that's on our plan has to be. Yeah, to.
And all the things you're gonna be looking at. But I mean, be that.
I would also say that I don't know if it was. Not so good to use that, but. How comfortable will it be when I have a center turn? That could especially on a curb like that, that could be a little. Very, it will slow things down. That function too.
I think the slowing down the track is a huge advantage and my feelings is nice. Perfect.
More of a kind of privileged situation. I'm not doing that for everybody being really quiet today. I never try hearing everyone.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Should I have your?
No, I heard. Thank you.
Yeah, I I thought that. During some of the discussions we had with Patrick when we're looking this a while ago. That there was a different mix that we could use on Baker Road that would would help with. Um, yeah, and so maybe we would look into that too.
With the running, with the running, right. We'll probably, you know, we'll hear you this time.
Uh, we're. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, next item, um, we've received five discussion of official Dallas. That's very good.
Four, so um. Uh, first week May, uh, received a citizen initiated um. Uh, petition uh for charter amendment. Um, we went through a small process in twenty twenty. Um, the petition that was submitted that year. Um. We've been working through the process. Um, step one was for me to uh review the petitions and determine whether or not there were a sufficient number of signatures. Um, to uh take the petition out of the next step. Um, because there was not valid language or or language appropriate to be placed on the ballot included with the petition. Um, city council is required to adopt ballot language um to places on the ballot. Um, at that point, uh, I take the package and deliver it to the attorney general's office and the governor's office. Um, the attorney general's office reviews it for um uh. Legal sufficiency, uh, to make sure that it means um state law that there is something that can legally be voted upon. Um, and uh, the the governor's office reviews it for for other things, but uh whether or not the governor approves or disapproves. Um, it still uh moves towards towards the ballot or could go out of that way. Um, I I did determine that there were a sufficient number of signatures um to move on to the next step. Uh, within the forty-five days, uh, as is required. Um, and so um I brought uh to city council a draft resolution uh with draft ballot language. Um, that uh has been reviewed by by city. Um, so I I didn't want to bring it before you uh or evoke without having put it in front of you for discussion first.
So. Um, a couple of questions, so. The on on your memo, of course, item that you had number one, it says city council must adopt ballot language by resolution. Is that, is there a state law that says that?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what that is?
I can, um.
I I'd like to know. What that law requires because frankly, I'm not holding for the. For the ballot language and I don't like the ballot, so. Not in favor of it. I understand you may have to do a clerical thing, but if you must, then. I think we're entitled to write up a resolution to express that. Or the ballot, it's just simply an issue.
So I know with the term of term amendment petition in twenty twenty, the council did add um a piece to that resolution stating that. The couple was not supportive of of the ballot initiative.
The um. The the. Not not trying to nitpick or anything about the the proposal that you have for the point that was in there. It. Yeah, two should. I think adding the book, so. When I read it, the way it turned out, I think it changes it somewhere, but I think the one and the two in there. Um. I think it would be the challenge to the beginning. It seems like that's. But. That's just my initial thoughts.
But there does uh. That is all because the. The far and open gas language. It does not.
Was, sorry, I'm sorry. What, so. We would submit the ballot language to the attorney general, is it? So what's the timeline that we need to have that done in order to be able to support for November or election?
So. Final deadline is August. It's the prior August for for November twenty twenty-four. Um, but but they they require ninety days uh of submittal before they can turn it around. Give it back and say, yes, some of this off the the county included on the ballot.
So we could.
But I mean. The 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 way that the city attorney and I have interpreted. The the state law on elections. We we feel that it can only go to November twenty twenty-four. Um, I I've asked for clarification from the attorney general's office and from the Bureau of Elections. Um, the attorney general's office declined to comment because it's not an item that has already been submitted. And I have not got a response yet from the Bureau of Elections and I submitted this, you know, a request of a number of weeks ago. Um, but I I I don't, I I don't wanna be the holdup on getting all of the the package submitted.
Wow. So I'm looking at the the memo here in the on the list, the one four. So number one, departments of ballot language, that the system would be tempered intent of a citizen initiated petition. Does that mean we're not able to tweak this at all or should we have any way in there?
You 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 can tweak it as long as you do not create. A bias one way or the other, um, and it's continued. So the 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 easiest way to make it consistent with what is submitted is to use as much of the language that was submitted.
Okay, um, then this is, I guess, a technical question off of that. So it's quicker words in the last one, if I can calculate correctly, it's seventy-four words, it could be awful. Do the numbers count as words, one and two? And do the yes and no count word to count?
Uh, the yes and no do not count, but I believe that the numbers do.
Okay, so then that's where I ask something for with the numbers in there.
Yeah, because because the 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 question is what the attorney general office said has stated that they consider the explanatory caption. Um, the yes and no are are the 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 responses to to the explanatory caption, that makes sense.
Other comments?
Wow, I'm sorry. I just, I mean, this is not about changing the language, I guess, but. My biggest concern about this is it's like the charter amendment we had last time. People, people voting on this, I don't may not understand. What would happen afterwards. Right. So. This isn't directly, I guess, about the language, more so maybe that resolution that we put forth saying we are we're not for it. If that's what we decided to do. Because I just think there were some huge consequences to this, including the fact that. As it's now what this body is a clean. If this passive, we can't use the fire patient line to put a fire station. Anywhere. Right?
I don't know why this would prevent that at all.
Well, we couldn't put it where we've already allocated funds to.
This doesn't say anything about. Or a building that contributes to the recreation that's on the property at all.
Hey.
I mean, I mean, the land is already. Well, some of it is. Some of it is, um. When we retain, we want to give the nuisance out to the county for the trail. So fortunately, there's already bound to the public, unless the county changes the mind and decides to. Pick a trail or don't see them. Um. And that land is actually devoted to active recreation and active recreation today.
I guess my only, but the point I'm trying to make is that I don't want to be in a situation like what we were.
I agree with you.
In the last time.
I agree, but but I mean, I mean, we. We can't. Can't add so many words that create a barrier.
No.
I mean, I mean, the uh, the intent. The intent is to put it in the form of question. Because the language that was submitted to us is not in the form of question. In order for it to be in the ballot for a trace, that's been in form of question. So, but I I agree with you, I think those points need to be clarified. I don't know whether, I think. My goal today is to make sure that I understand the process that we have, time only which we have to do. I'd like to think about the the language. I'd like to actually talk to Ron about the language. Um, being part of a representative between the country, which we all are. Great name. I'm assuming that, um. Well, no, we're perfect, I would say.
Very good.
No, no, it's okay. I think understanding the process is first step. And I I'd ask just to try to lay out. A bunch of that as I could today because not everybody was on council when we did this last time. Um, I think it would be, I think it would be great for us to have a sample of the next meeting. The language that we used in the sample resolution that we passed before, so we could see what that kind of looks like or look like. Um, it works so well, but I don't want to repeat it again. Exactly. Because there are still people who said, you know, it was a chance, I need to. But, um.
So so.
Our our role, our role on this is that because it didn't come to us in form of question, we get to put it in form of question and then. Send it on and at which time if you used to do that, it's up given by. But to just a point, they don't want, he's asking us not to sit on it forever because we want to give it to the governor. I'm due to figure to do it just.
And then uh this this draft resolution is substantially. The same as what you saw in twenty twenty.
I didn't have a chance to go over it. I wanted to do it, but.
Um, minus the the item of support against the ballot item. Which can.
And if we think of questions that. Technically related to the question again. How do you want to provide those?
Uh, because I mean, you know. Got that. Very. And it would it would be nice if if. I can't add all of those questions at the same time. Though I'm not going back to just got, you know, very helpful, that's.
Make it with deadline. Well, I I first of all, they they propose to amend section one point oh four of the charter. And that's not a word in the language. Does it kind of? I haven't.
But and. Given that that's. If there is a section one point oh four of the charter. Does this replace that?
Well, they didn't, I believe they were, they were stating that there, I don't believe there was one. They they were absent and that's why they didn't. They would have stated it was this and replaced it as. Wait, I don't think there is a law. But I didn't know, I didn't know if it should state that. Okay, well, if we take this stuff, we're trying to get back to the best of the next five weeks. But what you guys are gonna ask, go ahead and.
That's sort of around, I mean, I think we were looking into it. We got a deadline so that you can ask Scott all the questions at once, but we're also not holding up the process for you like you were saying.
Yeah, so I mean, if um, you know, if we can say. You know, all the questions back by the twenty-first. By July first.
What if we did it with.
Yeah, um, I'd also, I mean, I think it's. tangentially related, I'd like to know. If the council wanted to propose a ballot. Uh, or not about uh amendment to the charter. What can you just outline just broadly what required for that?
It could be very.
I I I think it's a, I think it's a three that's involved.
You just simply give the resolution, it says there's gonna be a new amendment to charter.
I I believe so. I I believe that is what we had to do. For the last council initiated charter amendment to allow the the same.
And.
That's all right. Okay, just clarify.
Yes, one last thing, um. Mr. Michelle's mentioned during the. Announcing of the conflict of interest uh section. Um, about campaign. This. That conflict. Um, I hope it needs to be reflected in minutes, not the conflict that I found. Is seventeen to six in the um ordinance. Uh, paragraph I, which is a member of public servant that's a member of the group. Can has a. Can, has a number, can, in part of the discussion of voting, so didn't have anything to do with. Seventeen one six I, seventeen dash six, section I. And if we, the ordinance provides that council can take a vote, on whether or not it's got, like, if they're black.
I mean, just means they want to follow up to that, I mean, for as long. As we talked about that conflict of interest ordinance, I can't help how many times the word perceived came up. And, I mean, regardless of which clause you're citing this under, I don't think there's any way to get around a perceived conflict of interest.
Okay, let's go to him six, which was the floor A two. Uh, let's act the factor, diets here, considering here with fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Wave the contract, and if we did a moment here, first, so does that have a special link? So, um, we leave that we approve the contract with wave to the door to door, you know, of limited service. Second, okay, we got self, or second, five, and the rules. Okay, Michelle, you asked this to be moved up.
Yep, so I have a question on on one background, this seems to imply that. We're also providing for services from Dexter School to the area. So specifically provide door-to-door services for the city of Dexter and Dexter School District area. So it seems like this contract has been in existence and then got added and got added. So my question would be, would it be clearer or cleaner? If it said instead, uh, wave to provide a portion of said public transportation as defined in section three. That specifically describes services will be provided. I say that also because three B seems to contradict. That last sentence in one. Or it's that service.
I I I think that's clearly not a whole change, that it could be a medical.
Yeah, but I I think it's important, otherwise it comes to say the contract says you're going to pay for stuff, so I, what's your outlook, Dexter?
Okay, so does that, we need a. Okay, do you ever? Is there any difference between what the halfback is that we, that we can change at all, or? Or change on service at all? Then we spell well.
Yes.
All that, yeah.
No.
Shla?
Yeah.
Albert, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Paris. Okay, through this side of the council seven, which is on our K four, consideration of the amendment with donation policy. So, what is the motion, please?
I guess I'll move it with a couple of changes, I'll try to go slow.
Okay.
That the introduction reference today's adoption date. That'd be updated from February twenty-seven, twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
On page three, striking parentheses or one hundred fifty dollars for a shrub. I can go into details on here, that, that, that's some fancy shrub, shrubs are advanced. Um, that the first paragraph underneath gift for parks program under page one twenty-eight. The last sentence that starts for donations, instead read. All donations over one thousand dollars will receive a certificate, period. All donations over five hundred, or for five thousand dollars are eligible for a plaque to be affixed to the item. Semi-colon, the cost of the plaque will be covered by the donor. And I guess I will speak to that if there's a second.
So, so where where did you want that, instead, as instead of the last sentence of the first one of the line, you're?
Correct.
Okay, can you read for one more second?
All donations over one thousand dollars will receive a certificate, period.
Okay.
All donations over five thousand dollars are eligible for a plaque to be affixed to the item, semi-colon, the cost of the plaque will be covered by the donor.
Got it, that's repeating.
And second.
Okay, well, just a second, I hold that, thank you. In this section. Oh, Zach, I do.
So, the reason why I struck the shrub is, is. Shrubs are really difficult to maintain in our types of parks, and I can't imagine what sort of a shrub one to buy for a buck, so I'll just put them on trees. Then the linguistic changes on the gift for parks program is they're kind of separate concepts, here's what happens for a thousand. Here's what happens for five thousand, and the reason why I want to do the semi-colon is that because that binds those two concepts together.
Okay, so, so I, um. And I may have not caught this by ear when you said that, but any other reference to shrub. In that same paragraph or the one below would also come out.
Yeah, correct, yes, my apologies.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're good. Get there together, okay, um. There were, yeah, motion. You have a second? When I'm done. There, there, we go.
Albert, yeah, Shla?
Yeah.
Sunny Sarah?
No.
Shals?
Yes.
Albert, yes, yeah.
Yes, motion carries. Last new business, we did a M eight, formerly K seven, and consent agenda, consideration of the purchase of a split payment system. Thirty-one forty Main Street, and that's part of our supplemental information, it was on. They will live for every guy. Okay, if I could get a motion again, in a second.
I moved in the approval of purchase of the split, you mean, system for eighty-one forty Main.
Sir. Was it all that, second, myself, Sarah? If you both. Okay, Zach, your question?
Yes, so my question is, why are the HVAC mini splits so expensive? I rate this. If you do a quick Google search right now, you can find a twelve thousand BTU mini split for a hundred thousand dollars. You can find a thirty-six thousand BTU with three zones, three zones for under eight thousand dollars. You do the math, that's nine thousand dollars, that's a huge difference. That's eight thousand bucks, I know it's little, but it feels like there's a huge markup on there. Twenty-four thousand dollars for two, um, is. Is not consistent with these reality, that these costs, uh, the other thing is that although they only have. Circle the thirty-six, if you look at both the twelve thousand BTU and thirty-six thousand BTU specs. Their SEER rating is really low, that's a measure of efficiency. If you go and you do your little Google right now for the commercial ones, their SEER ratings are in the twenties. This is only sixty-six percent efficient as what we can get for less money. So I have concerns about why these units were selected and why they're that expensive.
Do you want to call the item in your clarification? Somebody here that answers the question, probably?
Yeah, how do you, how do you, David or, or, so we, we have, can we handle two here to answer? Um, I know they're proposing, it's been one of each, uh, along with all installation costs. Um, and both systems are intended to be upstairs, both systems are intended to be. Reused in these, in in the new facility, uh, when that time comes. Um, and Doug, I don't know if if you can recall, um, from David's email, but. Um, I believe they were intending for one of the split unit systems to be used in in one of the hot zones. The, the, the circulator, uh, full, full flare, flare in, flare out.
Yeah, I I I don't know exactly, because he talked about a couple spaces, but. They were in the SCBA room and in the tool room, uh, connected to the apparatus bay. And felt that, that that is, these were the units that he would in fact spec. For use in that area that would also do double duty and work to cover the current space. Uh, therefore, making the purchase now at least reusable and efficient for. The future project, but we, I didn't have any discussion with him about the. Efficiency of the units themselves or the specs, it was more about the efficiency of making a purchase now that could be. Have dual use and and be reusable.
That, just to clarify, mini split do not pull fresh air out. This fellow here, it's like your air conditioner, it's got part on the outside and part on the inside, just circulates what's in here. Um, the other concern I noted on here is that these only pool. Almost every mini split system in existence today does heating and cooling, so we're paying for half the service.
So, I think a lot of those ones, really, just like we said. Make the most of the books, fine. Thank you, Dan. Well, okay, sorry. You have to cut to that to the other button. Okay, please go, one more.
Albert, yes.
Yes.
Sunny Sarah?
Yes.
All that, yeah, Shals?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, see, the next reading, um, we're down to non-range participation. We state your name and address, you're right, if you would please, welcome.
Ron Miller, seven, six, five, four, Forest Street. Uh, first off, I want to thank council for their support as a member of the board of the best for seniors there. Thank you for the support, the seniors there, it's greatly appreciated. And the difference of port is set, I'm getting thanked. Uh, the other, well, the other thing I I want to mention is as a, uh, I'm on the, the treasure, the friends of the local. And, yes, Mr. Q, uh, I thank everybody. I didn't mean to, you know, by calling ourselves friends, it would obviously insinuate that there are no friends and no free. I think we can say that we're all friends and no free, but we can also feel there are decisions made that might not be. Regarded as friendly towards the development, the future development of that whole thing. And I, that's what I feel was rendered in your decision or three decision to continue on of our station. That I voiced my my concerns at that good time. As a result of that, it's, it seems like it's become, you know, kind of a contentious battle, I'm, I'm really. I'm sorry that this is a significant contention between members of council, that they. It it it's truly not a product of our intention, but simply could. Inform the council, there are a lot of citizens in Dexter. By our petitions, just as a family, that are still very concerned. About this and still have some want to share their lives, their voice, having hear their voices about this. Rather than. A four to three decision that does not speak well towards twenty years of this. Twenty plus years of this particular issue being on the table, that you. You arrived at your, your decision, but it was, I felt, not representative of many voices that. Still need to be heard, so. I asked if there's something else we could do, and this, our initiative was, was just that, was a way to say, okay. Let's see if we can put this back in the hands of the citizens of Dexter. We got a great deal of support when we went around and a lot of questions and a lot of people with misinformation. Uh, about, I mean, there are still people that thought it was going to be up there, that of you. And had questions about that. The desire of the petition, as you said, was, I mean, whether the language is is cleared up and needs to be clarified or not, but really was. To take the fire station off the table, to have the focus on that land. Be towards the development of park banks as a continuation of overall mill free development. And the future decisions on development, as you saw by some of the reactions to the A one fifty front base. There is still a lot of concern about the way the city is going about and thinking about development in a city, as the city. Whether you choose to expand its borders, go out the Dexter, Chelsea corridor. There's still, I think, a a lot of concern on what that mostly. There's concern by the people who would like to see that parkland protected as much as possible, because how do those, any property, any development that happens out there. Or Long Jeffers or Broad Street, how those really relate to the parklands. And other, other interests that people have in parks, I think, now there's lots of support, people still said whatever happened to the. Canoe livery and and the access to no free fall, a lot of things happened. It didn't work, so I think there's still a lot of voices to be heard, I would even like to. Think that, um, by my understanding, I know that we technically can't get on, uh, by the way. The charter is, is written till the twenty twenty-four election. But that actually council can call an initiative, a special election. Themselves. Uh, and I think you have sixty days after that initiative to, um, cause that special election is called, you can have a vote. I would like to think there's a lot to be gained by, uh, an election happening this year. Rather than pushing it out because both the problem is is going to create for the city. Where this to pass, to speak to. Um, your question is, um, that it has some potential impact. On, on how that land is used. The intent is that a fire station would not build on that property, that that would actually become part of our site, we can free. And I know that park directors all wanted to figure out a way to add to the park. And expand on it and access to the park, we don't have handicap access, we don't, we don't have a lot of things that we'd like to get. To make that part much more accessible to folks, that currently is. Uh, I I'm sure you all have have talked about those things too, but I think that discussion. Still needs to be cleared on with the public, so that's. I I would hope that you still think that there's voices to be heard and that you would like to hear from. Uh, before even move forward with actually committing a lot of dollars towards the continuing development of the, uh. Of the current fire station. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, John. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that I'm not around? Hands up on the online folks. Okay, we're down to council comments, I'll let our two students leave us out today.
I don't have anything.
Okay, so, Ben, Zach.
Um. Just wanted to say, I get a bit of side eye when I pull things off and send agenda. Our rules, our rules order of, we just pull things off. I pull them off because I have questions, because I think that they can be better than what they're there for. It's for a public purpose, so. My apologies to such folks, but if I see something that requires attention and question, I'm going to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, you do, I had a gentleman stop me today, um, with actually resident. And he was wondering if, uh, we've ever thought about. And he was wondering if, uh, we've ever thought about changing the hours to city hours. He was under the impression, the reason their office hour has been ninety five is because that's when the bank. Thank you. Thank you.
Well. Um, I wanted to, um, just say a couple of things about why I have been going middle on the agenda. I agree that, you know, there are reasons to pull things off, consent agenda, for example, what we pulled off K seven today. I thought that was a good reason to pull that off, given the supplemental and the additional questions that we have. Um, so that, if that had been the only thing pulled off, I would have voted yes on the agenda. But the other two items that were pulled off, in my opinion, are things that in that effort to save everyone's time here can be addressed with city manager prior to the meeting, especially if. It's just basically adding a period and a semi colon. And I mean, it, it, I don't think anyone here would have, we've been upset if shrubs got crossed off. In the supplemental and then, you know, we could just move on and keep things moving, I mean, that said, this was one of our quarter meetings, thank you everyone for. For that, um, you know, I will sit here until midnight if I have to, but I think sometimes when we have dragged things out, we are less productive, less focused. Um, and our discussions aren't. Good as they could be, we didn't spend time on things that we don't need to spend time on.
Thank you, Bill. Um. When we issued the bond and I got the proceeds from the bond. Everybody in the council was aware of that. The money cannot be spent at the minimum percent. So hopefully we can make the public aware that, um. Doesn't seem to be understood that it's not an option to build or pay over. We literally don't have the money to build a fire station at that site, so. We can keep on talking about it, but it's not going to make it happen, so. I understand the, the thoughts, I, I understand and respect the discussion, the difference in opinion on which is the better site and how things should go. We, we have a saying at work that when you're going through design, when you're in launch for a product, sooner or later, you have to shoot the engineer and you have to start production. You have to stop. Thinking around with it and you need to go forward and do. And yes, we've been talking about fire station for decades and we got to a point, and yes, it rarely has a bit, and the thing is, the idea that. A four to three vote or five to two vote, whatever it ends up being, is an issue, it's not. That's the way things go through the legislative body, it's not only seven to nothing, it's just, that's the way it goes. And frankly, if it had been a four to three vote the other way. The people that are complaining, the friends of Mill Creek, the enemies of the fire department. Would not be. So. Frustrated, that's my thoughts. Um, I just have a couple, um. And I appreciate the openness of everybody, I think it'd be better if we're open and sharing why we're doing this. Couple of years ago. We were having, and we still have long meeting, where we asked Justin, how can we speed up the meeting? He said, well, if I put more things on consent agenda, like. He was everybody with another communities, maybe it was a suggestion, I don't have to trade their options, but they can away. But the reason we're seeing a lot of letters on consent agenda is because common do so, and there's actually. Well, and if you know what you want, there's no problem with that, um, but when you can ask the question of fact. Or make a subtle suggestion ahead of time, um. You know, like the way your question, you know, could have been confirmed with the way the person before the meeting was. We'd had it ahead of time, but. That was the reason why all of these are on consent agenda, I know you get that, so everybody, you don't have to go and we'll get through it and stuff, we'll, we'll make a drive. With regard to the, the, uh. You know, the park, um, and fire station, that property has been a joint use forever and it's never been a problem. And every discussion we've had about improving that building one way or another for the last ten years has involved. Elevators and bathrooms with the idea of improving the park access and improvement of the use for the users that go there. And I know that the conversation that are taking place. Uh, and have taken place about the current renovations slash everyone, oh, what we're doing, we're willing, so, you know. In twenty twenty four, since it's been both of us. Somehow like what you do on there, but it's not going to change the intended use of the park. Uh, and there's no, there's no law in the state that says you can't have a willing or fire station in the park, so. I don't, I don't want to be contentious either, I don't think it's, it's, it's a misguided content issue, it's really silly, nobody's ever complained about the one station. Until all of a sudden, there was a different option. But the services remains instructive, high, and I think that's really mattered, so. Um, I hope we all can work together to, to achieve that and, uh, Joe, thanks for reminding us, you know, the money has been, the money has been set aside for that site. So, uh. Sure that it will take another, passing of another however many million to build somewhere else and all of this money would sit with the interest. It is due, sit in Astro, you pay out, it would be a huge ratio of everything we've gotten to as a, as a community, so. You know, I hope we don't go there. I hope we don't, we don't go there. We follow a democratic process and, and this is where we are, it may not be perfect, but it's going to yield the benefit for the community for a long time. Are there any proposed agenda in future meetings? In this time, I'll take a motion for German. At, uh, number yet, eight, seven, all right. Paul, the bear, if you could, I say hi, please. Ocean carries, everybody having been a couple of weeks, staff, thanks for all your work.